Welcome everyone to the San Rafael City Council Regular Meeting for Monday, October 18. I will request the city clerk to call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bushy.
Present.
Councilmember Hill.
Present.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Here.
Councilmember Yiran Scalotti is absent. Mayor Kate.
Present. We met in closed session. I will invite the city attorney to report out if there was any action taken.
Uh huh. Thank you, Mayor Kate. Good evening. No reportable action was taken in closed session this evening.
Wonderful. So as I said, welcome everyone to the council meeting. If this is your first meeting that you're attending virtually, we like to start them with staff having their cameras on. These are the folks that help make our city function so beautifully every day. So, uh, so thank them. Uh, when you see them on the street, uh, we are incredibly grateful to them. I don't know about you, but this past weekend when it was raining, I'm sure you were excited. I know I was excited. I was like, yes, I can take a longer shower. But you know what? I have to remind everyone, every drop helps, but the local water agencies do keep reminding us. We need a hundred and forty percent of usual rainfall to get back to normal. That's a pretty terrifying thing. So please stick with the water conservation. Um, that is important and hopefully come at next summer, it won't be as big an issue. So let's all hope for lots more rain. But we don't want it to be this coming Saturday. Why? Because this upcoming Saturday from one to three, the city is celebrating Halloween. We have trick or treating in our downtown. So we want families to come out, have their costumes, bring a bag and trick or treat fourth street. And it's our way to come together as a community and celebrate the first of the holidays in the holiday season. We hope to see you there. Uh, I like to close mayor remarks with a land acknowledgement where we honor the indigenous people who have lived and are living in San Rafael. This city is traditionally home to the Coast Mewaw people, and we thank the original caretakers of this land and honor their continuing involvement and stewardship practices that benefit us all. So with that, we will proceed, or I will turn it back over to the city clerk and she can mention to or tell the public how they can participate in this evening's meeting.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. At this time, I would like to ask staff to turn their cameras off. Thank you. This meeting is being recorded and streamed live to YouTube and viewers can provide comments by telephone by calling six six nine nine zero zero nine one two eight. And the meeting ID is eight nine nine two six three five nine eight eight five pound. Or they can comment and watch directly through Zoom using the link on the agenda. If you're commenting over the telephone, please press star nine when Mayor Kate opens the public comment period. Once you've heard a notification that the host is inviting you to speak, please press star six to unmute yourself. If commenting through Zoom, please use the raised hand button to let us know that you would like to speak and wait until you've been unmuted. If you experience any technical difficulty, please email city.clerk@cityofsanofal.org. Closed captioning is available for this meeting and I've included the link in the Zoom chats. Thank you.
Thank you, city clerk. So the first item is time, open time for public expression. This is for any item not on our agenda for later this evening. Is there anyone who would like to speak to us?
Once again, anyone calling in, please press star nine and anyone using Zoom can use the raised hand feature. We will have two minutes to speak, so we'll use our timer and I will mute as soon as time has elapsed. If I could get that public timer to give us two, thank you. And we do have a speaker.
Hi, are you referring to me? Okay. Hi, um, I would, I have, can you hear me okay?
I can. If you could identify yourself, that would be great. And then go ahead.
Sure. My name is Susan. I had two comments. I probably don't have enough time for that. But I, um, am I allowed to, to make a comment about something in the future that will come before the city council?
You can comment on anything you would like.
Okay, um, um, there's a proposal that was pa- I, I read an article in the Marin IJ about, um, the assisted living development that was, I guess, approved and amendment was approved for, to add height. And, um, uh, one of the planning commissioners, um, made a comment. Way I wanted to just pass on some information that probably would be, um, helpful or interesting. And that is that Corte Madera had something, um, very similar with the similar, with the same company wanting to develop a assisted living, um, um, facility on, in Corte Madera. And so I highly suggest, um, that someone speak with, um, the Corte Madera Planning Manager. Um, there was a, um, what Corte Madera did was, um, they had a requirement that the architectural plans didn't conform to the zoning. And so, um, Corte Madera approved it, but they asked for the company to do something for them. And they, what they did was require nine low income slots for the rental, rental side. And that I highly suggest maybe looking into that because I think it's actually a really good idea. So that's my comment. I'll comment on something else another time.
Thank you, Susan. And also if you have additional that you wanted to say on that, I think we got the gist of it. Um, you can always email the city clerk. Actually, the city clerk, could you just put your, um, you could put your email address in the chat? So, uh, any additional comments can be captured and forwarded to planning. So thank you.
Okay. I see no other hands raised, but just once again, give everyone about 10 seconds. If you did want to provide public comment, you would need to press star nine or use the raised hand feature on Zoom. I see no further public comment.
Thank you. I will close the public comment and ask the city manager to join us and give his report this evening. Hi, Jim.
Hi, thank you, Mayor Kate and council. A few updates and announcements. First one is that Keltran staff was at the last city council meeting and gave a very thorough background and explanation of this upcoming weekend's closure at US 101 Central San Rafael Off Ramp. Due to the replacement of the Keltran's bridge construction that's been going on there for some time. So anyone interested in a very high level of detail can go back and check that out from the last meeting, but I just bring it up tonight because it's this coming weekend. Um, so as a reminder that it starts on Friday, October 22nd at 10:00 PM and goes through Monday, October 25th at 5:00 AM. So it, it should not affect any weekday commuters, but it will require a detour for the northbound direction of this weekend. So that is likely, um, all most drivers will need to know, avoid using the northbound Central San Rafael exit this weekend. And allow a little bit more time to get to where you're going. Uh, but for more information, this project is listed under the news and announcements tab on the main homepage of our website, cityofsanofal.org. Uh, in addition, I wanted to, uh, Mayor Kate mentioned the trick or treat down fourth street. So you already covered that. Just a couple of other quick things to add to that. Uh, you did mention it's, it's one to three this coming Saturday. Uh, want to thank the Business Improvement District for their ongoing great partnership on this event and all events downtown. And, um, also there will be Dia de los Muertos altars and storefronts and a, uh, Day of the Dead car parade, um, starting at 3:00 PM. So there's a host of activities. So you can come down for the trick or treating and then stay for the car procession as well. Uh, my next announcement is that we're looking for some feedback on the county's proposed reusable foodware ordinance. Uh, that would require that most takeout containers be compostable and there would be a 25 cent cup charge for drinks such as coffee to encourage customers to bring their own mugs. The ordinance would help the county and San Rafael comply with state law SB 1383, which will make composting a requirement for businesses across the state. This is something that City San Rafael staff is working on. Corey Bitoff is working on it through our sustainability program. And from a staff perspective, we want to be sensitive to the needs of our, of our business community. This would be a new regulation on our business community. And we take that very seriously, particularly given COVID restrictions and instability in the economic climate right now. Uh, but we also want to balance that with meeting our goals around reducing food waste and encouraging composting. So it's certainly a balancing act. Uh, so the county and Marin cities and towns are seeking input from the community, both from businesses, uh, that this would apply to and for residences that would be patronizing those businesses. So there's a survey that's going to be available for about almost the next month. It ends on November 12th. Uh, and we're particularly looking for business feedback, but really anyone, um, could respond to the survey, which is at cityofsanofal.org/takeout and takeout just being one word. So you could, uh, our community and our businesses can help us and the other cities and towns in the county, um, think through this by responding to the survey. And then lastly, I know Mayor Kate is going to close tonight's council meeting in honor of the passing of city employee Anne Bauer. So I don't want to take away from that here, but I just wanted to briefly add how much of an absolute pleasure it was working with and just knowing Anne, um, through the years, about the last six years. Uh, she was a fellow returned Peace Corps volunteer, and I thought about that almost every time that I saw her because I always felt like it was, she had an amazing spirit of giving and volunteerism that she never sat down. She carried with her throughout everything she did, uh, in every day of her life. So she was a model for me. And I think a model for all city staff that work with her. So I just wanted to add to your comments later this evening, Mayor Kate, and say that she will be missed. So with that, I'll, I'll turn it back over to Mayor Kate.
Thank you, Jim. Appreciate that. So we have council member reports next, and I think we'll do these quickly. I know Assembly Member, Assembly Member Levine might join us in the next couple of minutes. So I might rearrange the schedule to align with his availability. So just a little heads up on that. I know we're expecting him sometime in the next couple of minutes, but let's go ahead and get started on council member reports. I'll start with the vice mayor.
Quick updates. Um, I attended a meeting of the Central Marin Sanitation Agency Board. We continue to work on our recycled water, um, projects and also, um, replacing the cover of one of our digesters. Those of you who have sharp eyes might have noticed that one of the big dome structures is missing. Um, it catastrophically failed several weeks ago. We're working, um, to get that, um, back up in the air and get that digester back on underway because we rely on that for our food to energy program. Um, that's what's going on at CMSA. I also attended the Locklom and Marina Oversight Committee. We continue to work on, um, phase two operational issues as we are moving into the second phase of, uh, construction at the marina. And also they have, um, started dredging, um, in the marinas. So that is, um, a, a big happy news for all of our, our boating enthusiasts out here. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. I have two reports to provide. Uh, one is the City School Liaison Committee, uh, actually met with Mayor Kate and City Manager Schutz, uh, in which we confer, uh, among the city or the San Rafael City Schools and Miller Creek School District, uh, as well as County Representation by Damon Connolly. Uh, we met on Monday, October 11th. Uh, we reviewed a range of topics. Um, I'll just call out two. Uh, one is that in anticipation of vaccine approval in November, uh, for children aged five through 11 years of age, they are preparing to deliver vaccines at school. Obviously there's going to be procedures around that. Uh, just want to give a heads up around that. And then the other I want to call out is that, uh, enrollment is down, uh, this school year, and, uh, there are some funding challenges ahead, and we are working through those challenges, um, regularly and getting updates, um, with the, with the districts. Uh, the second report is, uh, for the Priority Setting Committee that with Molly Cron, uh, did provide, uh, she is our senior planner at the county, uh, the Community Development Agency on October 8th to provide her some guidance, um, on how we think about data to inform our 2022 through 2024 funding cycle. Um, I requested that county staff analyze available data for racial subgroups. Uh, in short, it's important that we are disambiguating data inside of racial categories. Sometimes there are underperforming subgroups, um, they're experiencing disparities in different ways. Uh, so that was my direction. Those are my reports.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtz.
Just a couple of updates. Um, many sessions around homelessness that we've been working on. Um, at the MCCMC homeless meeting, we talked about our mobile health services that are available, um, which are many and not as many as focused on homelessness, but there are some out there, um, as well as, uh, updates around our SSA. And, um, I participated and as the Subcommittee on the Homeless Policy Steering Committee. And this is our county's, um, funding mechanism to fund programs that are all in, in the Marin County to support specifically to support the homeless. We have eight, um, contracts that are for renewal and two new programs that will be coming, um, recommended for funding. I'd also want to make sure that everyone knows that we have our Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority Board meeting on Thursday. Um, this is open to the public and there'll be a good update around the fire of foundry. Um, you may have seen that in the IJ. But it's a really good program that's going to be introduced around fire innovation, recruitment and education. It's a real wraparound program to try to bring in some new, um, new employees to the force, um, and provide some training. That's it for me.
Thank you. And I see that Assembly Member Mark Levine has entered our Zoom room. So nice to have you. So I'm going to rearrange the order of our agenda and bring forward the special presentation six E prior to our consent calendar. Uh, thank you so much, Assembly Member. I guess the Zoom room is yours, so we haven't choreographed anything, but I'm ready for my part of, uh, the presentation when you're ready.
Wonderful. Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, council members for, uh, inviting me to join you this evening. Uh, it's, uh, I've been looking forward to this all day thinking about, uh, the, the, you know, it's been nine years since I've served on this council and you have all done such a wonderful job for our city and is in such a great place. I remember when I was elected in 2009 that we were in the Great Recession and we were trying to plan for our public safety buildings. And, um, look at how they've, they've, you know, started, you know, popping up across the city. Uh, but I also remember that we had many meetings about a future library for San Rafael. And it was, uh, something that was close to my heart because I spent a lot of time at the library with my children. Everything from checking out books, using the computers, even reading to dogs in our library. And, uh, there's, it's enormously powerful for kids to have that experience and emphasize the importance of reading. And, um, we talked about what a future library would be, how it's a living room for the whole city, that it's a, a resource for people looking for jobs, accessing the internet. And, uh, and then of course, I got books every time I went with my kids and my kids saw me checking out books. But I knew that, uh, our library services could expand and serve so many more people in a future home. And over the past nine years, that stayed with me. And so this year, there, there is a little bit of, uh, I don't want to call it extra money in the state budget. There's never enough, but, uh, I made sure to, to request a little bit of money for, uh, the city of San Rafael. And, uh, so I am grateful that my colleagues in the legislature and Governor Newsom, uh, agreed with me that the city of San Rafael's library and future home of the library and maybe compute community center, um, was worthy of a million dollars. Uh, and we were able to deliver a check to the city earlier this week, uh, for the million dollars. I don't, does it fit inside that room? Amazing. Um, so that's, I'm just so happy to be able to do this and, um, you know, I'd like to, I'd like to think that it's not going to be too long from now. Uh, you know, thinking of this as not just a generational investment. If you look at the library, the main library in the city, it's a centennial investment. And of course we have other, you know, services and programs throughout the city that we've tried to push towards every corner of every neighborhood to make sure that everyone in San Rafael has access to these services. But these are generations that last, uh, in investments that last a hundred years or more, and it's worthy of that investment. And I can't wait to go to a groundbreaking in the future. And then of course a ribbon cutting, maybe I'll just attend in, in the, the back in the gallery and be some guy who said, "A long time ago, I served on this council." But I look forward to it.
Well, thank you so much, Assembly Member. Uh, we are so grateful that you remember your humble roots as you've gotten, as you work at the state and, you know, everything you said resonated with all of us. And I think for everyone who's listening, you know, both the family connection, bringing our kids there, and then the personal connection, that's where community comes together. And we are so grateful that you've been able, I mean, a million, that's a lot, that's a lot of dollars and that check is big for a reason. And it is a crucial conversation we're having and, and we will be able to put that to very, very good use. We'll probably come back and ask you for more, but just hey, a little heads up on that.
Yeah, please do.
But, but thank you for coming in and again for being a part of the San Rafael. You know, once you've been on the council, you've always been a part of the family and, and thinking about us. So we're so grateful that we're able to, to zoom in and I can't wait to go try to cash that check or cash a deposit, that check at the bank. I'm not sure how that works, but I'm going to try bringing that thing in there. We'll see what they do, but.
Fantastic.
With that, thank you so much and we'll be sure to keep you posted, um, as to how we put it to such good use, which we will for sure be doing. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, council members.
Okay. Thanks. Take care. Bye. Okay, thanks. Take care. Bye. I love that big check. I just, someone was saying earlier, I need balloons too. I was like, I couldn't fit in the Zoom room frame. So that was fantastic. And thank you, everyone, for being flexible and letting us rearrange the, the agenda. So I see the city clerk. Would we like to have public comment on item 6E?
Thank you. Yes, if you're on Zoom and you'd like to provide public comment, please use the raise hand feature. And if you're calling in, please press star nine. I see no hands raised, but once again, star nine and raise hand feature. I see no public comment.
Thank you. I will close it and bring it back. And I do have to say, it's a tiny silver lining to the Zoom is that we are able to have the Assembly Member attend our meeting. Like, how cool is that? So anyway, okay, we will go on to the consent calendar. I know I didn't get to my reports, but basically I was in the meeting, many of the meetings you were all in. So we will just keep rolling ahead. The consent calendar, I would actually like to pull item 5E, which is a consultant services for canal community-based transportation plan. Are there any other items that my colleagues would like to hold? Okay, not seeing that. We will open public comments on items 5A through G excluding E.
To comment on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature, and if calling in, please press star nine.
Actually, city clerk, may I rephrase that? I actually want to take public comment for all items. I was thinking of the vote. I will take public comment for all items A through G, although we are, we'll be talking about E separately, but public comment on all the items. I misspoke.
Thank you. I see no hands raised. I give everyone a couple more seconds. I see no public comment.
Thank you. I will close the public comment on the consent agenda and bring it back for a motion on the items excluding 5E.
I move that we adopt the consent account, the consent calendar excluding item 5E.
Second. Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye. That motion carries four zero, and I will hope that Director Garan will come on. We don't need a staff presentation. The reason I wanted to pull this item is because it's really a great item. It is, we always want to hear community input, and this is one that's being driven, pun intended, by Tam. And I was just hoping, Bill, that you could just speak to it because sometimes when you just read the words here, it's not clear exactly what it is, what it stands for, and if you could just speak to that.
I'd be happy to, Mayor and Council. Thanks very much, Bill Garan with the Department of Public Works. We are recommending that we hire fair and peers to do a community-based transportation plan. At heart, this is an outreach effort in order to get input from the canal community. It builds off a plan from 2006 and incorporates General Plan 2040, the Bike and Pet Master Plan, and other documents into, into what will be a future community-based plan focusing on this, you know, much, much needy area of San Rafael. A lot of it is public outreach. They are going to conduct a series of outreach meetings in the canal community in various formats, trying to get ideas and information from the community. That'll come back and be compiled into a report that'll be presented to the council and will represent the future planning for, for this part of San Rafael as it relates to transportation. So we're very excited about having the, the plan coming together and very grateful from Tam contributing over $66,000 to the effort, and the city's going to contribute the balance of the money to make this plan happen. So I'd be happy to entertain any questions if you have any.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? I don't see any, but I did want to highlight in the staff report from the consultant, it said that their goal is to get the input and to make it easy, relevant, and to go where people are. It's like, wow, that's so straightforward, so simple, and thank you for updating our community about what that is. So if there are no further questions, we already took public comment. I would entertain a motion on this item.
I'll make a motion to approve. Let me read the actual item.
You can just say 5B.
5B in the consent.
Thank you. Need a second? Thank you. Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye. That carries four zero. Thanks again, Director Garan. We really appreciate that. Okay, special presentations, where we already had one. We were a little bit, we reordered as we talked about. So we are fortunate to have another one, Presentation of the Beacon Award by the Institute for Local Government. And I am thrilled that Nikita Sinha can join us, and I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. Thank you for having me. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. I just have a couple slides as visuals. So, good evening, everybody. My name is Nikita Sinha, and I'm Program Manager with the Institute for Local Government. And in case you're not familiar with ILG, we're the nonprofit education and training affiliate of the League of California Cities, along with the California State Association of Counties and the California Special Districts Association. In 2010, ILG launched the Beacon Program as a recognition program focused on acknowledging the many steps local governments were proactively taking to address energy efficiency and climate change. Over the past decade, this program has evolved to include a framework where cities and counties can plan, share, and evaluate innovative strategies and programs to address a variety of climate-related issues facing our cities and our state. The Beacon Program honors participants for achievements in five spotlight categories: energy savings, natural gas savings, community greenhouse gas emission reductions, agency greenhouse gas emission reductions, and sustainability best practices. After receiving an award in all five Beacon Spotlight categories, a city qualifies for the highest level award, a Beacon Vanguard Award. This year, the city of San Rafael won a Platinum Level Beacon Spotlight Award for a 27% reduction in community greenhouse gas emissions. San Rafael has been a part of the Beacon Program since it started back in 2010 and was the first ever participant to win a Silver Level Vanguard Award in 2013. In 2019, most recently, the city won a Gold Level Vanguard Award for achievement in all spotlight categories. The city's achievement in reducing community-wide greenhouse gas emissions represents a joint effort between the community and city leadership. In particular, San Rafael City Council has prioritized sustainability as a policy-focused area in 2021 and adopted a climate emergency declaration, which advances the city's goals for carbon neutrality. Congratulations to the city of San Rafael for this achievement, and thank you to the Sustainability Division for all your hard work on behalf of ILG.
Thank you, Nikita. And I think Councilmember Hill had showed this before, but we also received a plaque. And I'm so grateful that this program is in place because it does spotlight, it's spotlighting San Rafael, but really all of the work that's being done throughout California to achieve these goals. And what I, it's taken away, as you were talking about all the dates and the achievements, San Rafael's been showing up since the beginning. We are, as you said, we are one of the first winners of the Beacon Award. We take it very seriously in our community. We recognize our role in reducing carbon emissions, both as an agency and as a community, and we are grateful to be able to be recognized. A lot of times, we do a lot of work, and we always don't get recognized. Still got to do the work. So we're really grateful to receive this Platinum Level Award, and we're going to continue to go for more. We want a whole, like, case of them because it really is a physical, there she is.
Thank you. To comment on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature, and if commenting by telephone, please press star nine now. It looks like we do have a speaker. Just to remind you, we do have two minutes, and as soon as the time has elapsed, I'll be, I'll be muting you.
Good evening. This is Bill Carney with Sustainable San Rafael. And I want to congratulate the city and, of course, also congratulate the community for reaching this milestone. And as the mayor says, San Rafael's been a leader in this for a long time. And yeah, all that's left is to get from 27% to zero net emissions. So, you know, we're on the path, and the community at large, I think, really appreciates that and appreciates the, the leadership that you've shown. And I also would just emphasize that, you know, as we look around at the larger planet these days, we see other levels of government, congressional, even UN, unable to really adequately address this crisis that we're in. And I think we need, in light of that, to look more and more seriously at what we can do right here at home in our own localities and exercise the power that we have as, that you have as local government, and also, of course, in partnership with the great work going on with the state of California as well. So we really are in a position of making a, making the difference and leading from below our, our higher levels of government. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill, and thank you, Sustainable San Rafael, for being a key partner in this work.
I see no other hands raised. We'll give everyone a couple more seconds. And that concludes public comment.
Thank you. I will close public comment. And again, thank you, Nikita, for making the time. And again, another silver lining to the Zoom is that you could zoom in and join us this evening. So we look forward to hopefully seeing you in a year when we get the next award. So thank you so much. Okay, on our public hearing, we have a couple items. The first one is, making sure I'm on the right page, yes, I am, an Urgency Ordinance Regarding Accessory Dwelling Units, also called ADUs. So in case you hear that acronym, that's what we are referring to. And I see Director Judasee has joined us, as has our new employee, Jacob Noonan. So nice to see you. I will turn it over to Director Judasee.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. Good evening and good evening, council members. For tonight's item on the ADU Urgency Ordinance, I am very pleased to introduce Jacob Noonan's, our new housing manager. We are very lucky to have him. Jacob has, comes to us with a wealth of experience in public service, specifically related to housing. He worked, has worked as a Housing Division Manager for the city of West Hollywood and most recently came to us from the city of San Francisco. So Jacob started and just dove right in and started working on some of the policy work that we've been, that's been on hold, and specifically started working on this ADU ordinance. So I'm very pleased to introduce him. Jacob, I'll leave it to you.
Thank you so much. It's a pleasure to meet you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. And thank you, Director. So this is, it's item 7A, and this is an urgency ordinance placing a 45-day moratorium on processing or approving any application for an accessory dwelling unit, or ADU, or junior accessory dwelling unit, or JADU, on any property that is solely accessed from the hillside streets listed in the urgency ordinance. And the reason these streets were identified for the moratorium is that these streets tend to be narrow and steep and also tend to have a high number of cars that are parked on them. So the concern raised by the San Rafael Fire Department is that a new ADU or JADU in these areas could potentially add additional vehicles parking on the street, which could in turn potentially further challenge fire truck access during an emergency. So the 45-day moratorium would provide staff the time needed to first study if, and if so, how. The most recent state housing laws allow the city to regulate ADUs and JADUs, including the ability to require onsite parking in these hillside areas, where the concern is the possibility that the new ADU or JADU could add an additional parking, vehicle parking on the street, where, you know, knowing that state law now allows ADUs and JADUs in any residential mixed-use zone, and that local governments may not preclude the creation of ADUs and JADUs altogether, but, and that any limitation should be accompanied by detailed findings of fact explaining why limitations are required. Now, the second relates to those limitations that could potentially be required. It's related to the public safety and public safety vehicle access. So staff will be studying whether these concerns could be alleviated by the parking box program, which will be implemented in these streets, on these streets, and should ensure that vehicle access is, is allowed by clearly marking where street parking is allowed and where it's not. So to be adopted, the urgency ordinance requires four affirmative votes from the city council. If approved, the moratorium will take effect immediately. Staff expects the 45 days provided by the moratorium will be adequate to complete the study and prepare any regulations for ADUs and JADUs on these streets identified in the urgency ordinance. The city has four applications for an ADU or a JADU that will be affected by the moratorium. Each applicant has been notified and is aware that any regulation to ADUs and JADUs resulting from staff's analysis could apply to their application. So this concludes the information that I had to provide for the city council and my presentation. I looked to the Community Development Director. She has anything to add? Since she's off-screen, I turn it over to you, Mayor.
Thank you so much. Director Judasee, anything to add? Okay, you're here.
Nothing.
I will, as usual, I'll first ask, call on my fellow council members for questions, and then we'll open up to the public, and then we'll come back for comments. So Vice Mayor Bushy, do you have any questions?
First, I'd like to welcome Jacob. Excellent staff report. My question for you is, what were your criteria for selecting the streets?
So I believe that the streets were selected by the Fire Department, and this was from their experience with access, and particularly with their fire truck access into these areas of the city. I see Chief White is joining us. He may have some additional comments he'd like to add to that.
Good evening, council. Good evening, Mayor Kate. Yes, my understanding is that these streets were selected in large part due to access and egress challenges that exist in multiple areas throughout the community, where you'd have hairpin turns, as an example, or very narrow roadways that did not allow for access, access and egress opportunities simultaneously, as an example. Areas that have just historically been a challenge for individuals to navigate under duress or under extreme circumstances. And so there was an example or two I can speak to. One was in 2016 where Fire Department personnel on Upper Fremont Road were not able to get their large apparatus all the way to the top of Upper Fremont Road and had to actually manually carry and take gear several hundred feet to, to provide an effective response. But I'm in certain agreement with the ordinance as it is written right now to take the 45-day moratorium to study and see just how effectively the parking box implementation can be and ensuring that we can find a, hopefully, some sort of balance or at least understanding on what's going to work best for our community.
Absolutely agree with the objective. I just wanted to make sure that we have a, a objective standard that we uniformly apply to all of San Rafael's streets so that this wasn't just a, a ad hoc approach, but that we thoughtfully came up with a standard and uniformly applied it. It sounds like you did based sort of on historical knowledge and maybe not with a series of spreadsheets. Is that, is that a fair description?
Yes, it's my understanding that personnel collectively went out and did site visits and did drive-throughs and did actual assessments of street width in a more detailed approach to ensure that the decision was based on some parameters and some guidelines, not just a, a sense of how someone feels or perceives a risk to be.
Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill.
Thank you, Mayor Kate, and thank you, Jacob, and welcome. I, my question, I have two. One of them you actually already answered. Will the draft ordinance, say, within 45 days, go straight to the council or will it go to the Planning Commission first?
It could come directly to the council unless there's any significant changes that would necessitate it returning to the Planning Commission. So I believe that our intent at this point is that we'd be able, that we believe we'll be able to forward this ordinance to the council directly within the 45 days.
Thank you. And I know we're not expecting it to exceed the 45 days. Are there any, I guess, are there any consequences to extending the urgency ordinance again if we needed to exceed the 45?
We would need to provide a report detailing out staff's work towards the regulations, and we'd do that, I believe, by November 22nd. If we did, in fact, need to extend the ordinance, we would need to do that within the 45-day period, and then we would be able to extend, the council would be able to extend the ordinance up to a The council would be able to extend the ordinance up to a a longer period of time, I believe, up to almost two years. Again, we don't expect that it's going to take that long.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtz.
Welcome, Jacob, and thank you for the report. In terms of the 45 days, we're going to be looking at the parking boxes. And I think the fire department, what are some of the? Is there a checklist of things that will be done in terms of evaluating that we'll be able to be able to provide back? That will give us some perspective in terms of, yes, this makes sense, and we need to move forward with this? Or maybe it's not all the streets? Or maybe I'm just trying to figure out what happens between now and the 45 days?
Yeah. Another aspect, certainly, we'll be looking at the parking box program and looking at how that will create good access. The other question here, though, is is around the ADUs and whether we could require onsite parking at properties for ADUs. And that's going to be an exploration into state housing laws and what we're allowed to do and what we're not allowed to do by the state. I should mention that this ordinance, once the council does adopt the permanent ordinance, we are required to send it to HCD, to the state housing community development department now. They will review it within 60 days and let us know if they agree that we are within the state laws or not. And so we we are looking to see if we could get a preliminary review so that we can understand what some of the limitations are. Because the new, well, the laws are relatively new. But the the state law is fairly clear that parking isn't a requirement for ADUs or JADUs anymore. And so it creates a little bit of confusion for us if we're looking at a health safety issue around parking, and yet parking is not required. Yet we, you know, know that in hillside areas, most likely, people will be driving. So you can understand why we want to be careful here and why we want to proceed with caution so that we adopt something that the that HCD would agree with.
Absolutely. Another follow-on.
So that's some of.
And just another follow-on.
Go ahead.
Are there other areas in California that have have passed a similar type of ordinance?
I am not aware of other areas that have passed a similar type of ordinance. Looking to the community development director, if she has heard of any other.
I have not heard of any other. I'm actually actually looking at our consulting attorney as I believe she has had quite an extensive experience with ADUs throughout California. Nira Doherty.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council, Nira Doherty. This is a question that we have discussed at length over the last couple of weeks. No, I am not familiar in the dozen or so cities that I've worked with on ADU ordinances of any city that has imposed a temporary moratorium. However, we did evaluate the defensibility of this moratorium, and although it is untested, we don't have any direct guidance from HCD, from the state legislature or any court cases on a temporary moratorium on ADUs in certain locations. We do believe that it is permissible under the state ADU laws as drafted, and that's because the state has reserved to local jurisdictions the authority to permit ADUs in certain locations based on life safety considerations. And so in working with the fire department and the community development department and public safety, staff has evaluated that we believe it is possible that the city could defensively restrict parking permanently. I'm sorry, restrict ADUs permanently in certain locations because of life safety considerations. And so we believe we can do so on a temporary basis as well. And and this is the precise issue that we will be studying over the next 45 days to come back to you and say, yes, we believe we can defensively prohibit ADUs in these locations or we need more time to study or here are some alternatives to protect the health and safety of your community.
And I have one follow-on question.
Go ahead.
In terms of if if a community member wants to raise another street of a concern or another area as a concern, do we have a process that that would, as part of this that we're introducing, would that also be included?
Yeah, we would probably go through the same procedures that we went through to establish this list and evaluate with, evaluate slope, you know, difficulty in getting there. So it would be the same process that we did go through for this list.
Thank you. And I was hoping, Director Judase, is it possible to just screen share the the map? It was a list of streets, but I I think it's helpful for the community as we're talking about this for a couple of reasons. One is, San Rafael has been and was an early supporter of JADUs. Back when it was first being done, we made a movement on this because we recognized it's a way to increase units without necessarily increasing a lot of density. But it's a both-and situation. So I just wanted people to see this because my concern was, thank you, is that in listening, it might be sending a different message. If you see, so we looked within our borders, okay, you can see the streets. So correct me if I'm wrong, Director or Jacob, that these are the ones that do tend to be, obviously, hillside and narrow for the most part, or all, I guess, to to meet the the criteria that Vice Mayor had asked about, and Councilmember Kurtz just followed up on.
Yes, that is correct. The streets that are highlighted in the gold are the streets that fall within the moratorium. And we do have a list of those streets by name in the ordinance itself. That's part of the council's agenda this evening.
Great. I just think that's helpful because it has been very targeted, and we want to be clear, as Nira just talked about, from the health and safety. And I thought it was, it's interesting to talk about the moratorium, but I do, and I realize I'm straight into commentary, but anyone who is a frequent attender of our meetings will know that at our last meeting, there were some neighbors on one of these proposed streets that was extremely worried about health and safety. I think we all have fire, you know, fire prevention on our radar screen. So this is why San Rafael is taking the step of doing a moratorium, even though, as Nira just pointed out, as well as Jacob and the director, that this is being looked at throughout California because these new state laws are coming in. So so thank you for letting me add that commentary. I don't have any questions at this point, and I'm grateful that staff was able to respond so quickly. So with that, I will ask the city clerk to join us and see if there's public comment or questions on this item.
Thank you. To comment on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature. And if you're commenting by telephone, please press star nine. And once you've heard a notification that the host is inviting you to speak, please press star six to unmute yourself. Each speaker will have two minutes to provide public comments, and then they will be muted once time has elapsed. And I do see a hand raised.
Good evening, Mayor Kate and City Council members. This is Victoria DeWitt. I'd like to thank Alicia Giudice and also Jacob Noonan for their effort in bringing this to the council so quickly. This is an important urgency ordinance, and I urge you to adopt. Adopt this tonight. I don't know how many of you have seen the video from the 1991 Oakland Hills fire showing residents trying to evacuate, but it's definitely an eye-opener to see what happens when every resident living on a hillside is trying to evacuate at the same time. It was total pandemonium. Cars are gridlocked, sirens are blaring, horns are honking, embers are flying everywhere. People are being told to get out of their cars and walk. It's very sobering to watch. And the scary thing is that it could happen here. So that's why it's really important to adopt this urgency ordinance tonight and to move forward with a permanent ADU ordinance. I would also suggest that staff look at the city of Berkeley. Berkeley adopted an urgent interim ordinance before they even wrote a draft ADU ordinance. They have a fire zone, separate fire zones. And so they did write their ordinance, as I understand, to limit ADUs in certain fire zones. I don't have in front of me, but I would suggest that staff research Berkeley. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you, Victoria.
Yeah, this is John Reynolds. I'm a resident of the Canal area. I think this is probably helpful. I do consider evacuation. The previous speaker talked about that. That needs to be done. But I I do relate myself to Kate Collins. She's talking about the image that we are a place that supports ADUs and JADUs. So we need to make an educational push on, this is just limited to hillsides and narrow streets. We really are encouraging otherwise ADUs and JADUs to be built because we're leading the leading the county on that. And we need to be clear about that, that we're not saying no to ADUs. Right? And the 45 days, maybe it needs to be extended? I don't know. Given evacuation needs and fire needs, I don't know. But we need to keep ourselves up to date on educating the public about this and not saying we're against ADUs and JADUs. So appreciate your considering this. Thank you.
Thank you.
I see no other hands raised. We'll give everyone a few more seconds. I see no further public comment.
Thank you. I will close the public comment and bring it back to the council for additional comments. And I will start with the Vice Mayor, please.
This is a fantastically responsive proposal brought forward by our staff for us in a in a very timely manner on a an issue that is front and center for everyone these days. So thank you to our staff for doing such a great job and moving this so rapidly and narrowly tailoring it to just address the specific problem at hand so they have time to consider and thoughtfully prepare our ADU ordinance so that we can address this issue across the boards and that all homeowners in those areas can understand what the ADU requirements are for for their property. So I'm very supportive of this request. And at the appropriate time, I'll be delighted to vote in favor of it.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Kurtz.
No additional questions or comments. I do think it is, it makes sense for us to look through this and evaluate it. With the follow-on, though, we want to make sure that, as we're opening up this discussion, that we put the qualifiers around it going forward. Because we do, we do support the need for ADUs and JADUs. So we want to make sure that that this is not a discouragement, but it's really recognized of the where and when and how to support those. So I will also be supporting this recommendation.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. I concur with my colleagues' comments. My only additional, and it is in the vein of what Councilmember Kurtz said, which is that we stand as a pro-housing city, that we are still committed to our arena numbers, and this does not take away from that commitment. And I will be supporting this measure as well, this resolution as well.
Thank you. Well, as always, my colleagues wasted so well. This was brought together wonderfully by staff. And we saw some of the folks, but I did want to thank Director Judase, Jacob, Nira, Chief White, and Lisa Goldfine for bringing it together. Emergency ordinances are hard. They're hard to do. They they have to respond from a legal perspective, and they need to do what you want them to do. And this in front of us does all of that. In a way, that addresses the health and safety concerns we have and balances the fact that we are a pro-housing, pro-JADU-ADU city. So with that, I would entertain a motion, and I would request that you read it. The city clerk has written it out. So whoever makes the motion, if they could read it into the record. And it does, let me say, it does require, it sounds like a unanimous vote in order to pass because it's a four-fifths vote, so.
I'm prepared to make the motion. I move that we pass an urgency ordinance of the city of San Rafael establishing a temporary moratorium on accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units on properties accessed solely from certain hillside streets within city of San Rafael and declaring the urgency thereof.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, and that carries. We got the four fifths vote. We miss Councilmember Yurans Gulati. Again, thank you, staff. The next item on our agenda is the city of San Rafael Essential Facilities Construction Project, Fire Stations 54 and 55. Seems like there's a theme here. We're talking about fire-related and ADUs now here. So happy to have Director Garin and Fabiola here with us. So I will turn it over to you.
And thank you, Mayor Kate and council. Bill Garin with Public Works. We are very excited and somewhat relieved to be bringing these two projects to you tonight. We, Fabi will go into great detail about what what we've been through. But we did bid them earlier in the year and got only one responsible bid. We've had much better success with lower prices and a bigger bid grouping. So we're excited tonight to bring the two remaining fire stations that need to be significantly modernized to you and seek your approval to move forward with construction. So with that, I'm going to introduce Fabi Ghianerfer, who is going to walk us through the pertinent information associated with our presentation tonight. And then we'll take any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Director. Good evening, everybody. Thanks for the opportunity to present this item. Let me share my screen really quickly. Let that with any. And. And that's. All right. So as Bill noted, we're here to present the Fire Stations 54 and 55 Construction Project as part of the Essential Facilities Strategic Plan. In 2013, developers of San Rafael passed Measure E with the main purpose of upgrading the essential facilities of the city of San Rafael to improve the essential services. This measure increased the rate, the sales tax by one quarter percent for 20 years, and that is the equivalent of 25 cents on a $100 purchase. Subsequently, city council approved the Essential Facility Strategic Plan, and the plan analyzed and evaluated our facilities, our essential facilities, and made a recommendation of seven projects to be upgraded or renovated in some way. The plan was divided into phases, and I am so happy and so proud to say that we completed Phase One with the completion of the new Public Safety Center last year in August, which is amazing. And then we also, for Phase One, was the renovation and replacement of Fire Station 52 and 57. And I'm here tonight with the hopes that we can kick off Phase Two, including the renovation of Fire Stations 54 and 55, the construction of those projects. And then there's two additional projects here as part of Phase Two listed here. And I just wanted to give you a quick tour towards what we have accomplished in Phase One. And we did Fire Station 51, 52, like I mentioned. And this is the before and after picture, and you can see the improvement is just amazing. This is Fire Station 57. It's a beautiful building, but not only beautiful, it's also super practical, and it's just improved our ability to do our jobs as first responders and serve the community. And this is Public Safety Center with a lot of different functions, but one of the the most important ones is we have an emergency operations center ready to be deployed in any kind of emergency. So I feel that San Rafael is just that much more equipped to respond today than. So I feel that San Rafael is just that much more equipped to respond today than in the past. And, you know, we have all the fires and the pandemic and all of these things. And we definitely are prepared to respond. And so moving on to what is existing for the two fire stations that we're trying to get, to move forward with construction for is Fire Station 54 located in the Canal District, Canal Neighborhood on Castro Avenue. So this is what it looks like today. This is the exterior and the exterior of the building. It's starting to get a little, it's starting to look its age a little bit. And this is the inside. And the reason why I'm showing this picture is, as you can see here on the top right of your screen, we have, you're starting to see the dilapidation of the building. It definitely needs a little bit of, a lot of work. And here on the left, the reason why I'm showing you this picture is because it's a tiny little space. Our crews are making things work as, you know, being adaptable and adjustable to the conditions that we have. But it's less than ideal. And here under, on the lower part of your screen, on the right lower part of your screen, you can see that's their sleeping quarters, kind of an open space with beds in there. And this is what we're proposing. We are proposing to, this is the new design. This is what it's going to look like. The design was done for both stations by Loving Campus Associates Architects, LCA. And we are proposing to demolish the housing part of the station and rebuild it and install new living quarters, kitchen, and all the supporting spaces. And we are also proposing to maintain the apparatus bay and do the structural and seismic improvements that are needed. Obviously, because this is going to go to two stories, we're going to need an elevator. And it's going to be fully ADA or Americans with Disabilities Act upgraded. It's also going to have an emergency generator, which is going to make this station pretty much self-sufficient. They, the crews right now fuel their vehicles in the corporate yard. And it is about a mile and a quarter, a mile and a half to the yard. So it's pretty, it's pretty convenient. It works pretty well. This is Fire Station 55 currently. Once again, the scope is pretty similar. But this is, this is what it looks like today. This is out on Point San Pedro. And this is what it looks like today. This is the restroom and sleeping quarters on the lower right and the building outside again. And here on the top left part of your screen, you can see how, again, we've been adjusting and adapting to the space that we have available with the workout equipment and the turnout gear. And this is actually the apparatus bay where they park the vehicles as well. So it is, it is quite crowded, to say the least. And this is what we're proposing. The new design, again, done by LCA in collaboration, of course, with Fire Department and city staff. Similar to Fire Station 54, we're proposing to preserve the apparatus bay and do the necessary upgrades, seismic and structural, and demolish the living part, living quarters part of the building and rebuild it from the ground up with all the necessary support spaces. We also would install a emergency generator. And in addition, we are proposing an alternate to include a fueling station on site. Currently, our staff needs to go, need to go to the corporate yard again to fuel their vehicles. And that's about a six-mile trip each way. So it's quite, quite a ways away from, from the site, from Point San Pedro to the corporate yard, which is on Morefu Street. As Director Garen mentioned, we went out to bid in May, just recently. And we received quite disappointing results. It wasn't very surprising. It was kind of in the thick of the pandemic. We didn't have the vaccine fully rolled out yet. So we went out to bid and received two bids. The lowest bidder was F&amp;H Construction, and the bids came in at $10.6 million. That price tag was pretty high. So it was decided to toss those bids and re-bid the project at a later time. And in preparation to a rebid, we did reach out to the prospective bidders, contractors. We called them. We asked point blank the question, like, why didn't you bid? There was interest shown, and the bids didn't come to the bid. And it was almost unanimous. Most people indicated the reason was it was too much uncertainty. The market was too unpredictable. There were shortage of materials. There was skyrocketing prices on lumber and metal and so many other different reasons that people just were really tentative, and they just decided that they couldn't, they couldn't back up the price. They couldn't, they couldn't pad the number enough to, to build the projects and deliver it at the time at the price that they, that they told us. So definitely, the decision to wait was a good one. We waited a few months and rebid in September, opened bids on September 30th. And we received six bids, which was definitely an improvement. And even better, instead of the $10.6 million that we received originally, these are the numbers that we got. We received six bids. And I want to get you to the bottom of the list here. Around a group, it was the original little bidder. And they found a mistake in the bid. And according to Public Contract Code, they submitted a withdrawal and justified it. And we, we agreed to the withdrawal and then released them of their obligation with us. And so we moved on to the lowest bidder, the second little bidder, which is Wickman Development and Construction. And I'm just going to read their numbers, not the rest. Their base bid is about $8.7 million. And the bid alternate to bid to build the fueling station at 55 only is $110,000, which is the lowest of all. This is kind of an FYI. And then the total bid amount would be $8.8 million about. We are recommending to, of course, a worthy contract to them. And for construction contingency, we would need 10% on top of that. Construction contingency normally covers any unforeseen, unforeseen conditions that were discovered during construction. If all goes well, we'll start construction on early next year. And if we approve this contract tonight for construction, we will require the need, the services of construction administration. Let me show you here. So construction administration services are generally, are almost always done by the architect who designed the building. And this is no exception. LCA or Loving Campus Associates designed the building. And they would be ideal to, you know, to do construction administration. Their job would be to answer questions, to review the product data, the equipment that is being installed, make sure that everything is according to the plans and specifications that are required. They would also help us with schedule management and other, and other, and other activities. They're, they would be on board for the duration of the project. And construction would take about a year, and they would be there from beginning to end. And LCA is requesting, the request is for $288,300 for this construction administration services. Exciting. Okay, so here we have a couple options for you. The first option would be to approve the base bid in the construction administration services with the contingency. And the numbers, here are the numbers. The total would be $9,849,200, including those three items. The option two is what we're recommending tonight. And it would be, it would include the base bid for $8.7 million almost. The bid alternate for the fueling station, the 10% contingency for $808,000. And construction administration for $28,300. The total request would be $9,970,200 for all these items that are included. The funding would come from, definitely from Measure E. This fund has been accumulating from the tax dollars that we've been receiving. And we have confirmed that there are enough funds to cover this request tonight. We definitely have been doing public outreach from the inception of this Essential Facilities Plan. Community development, Public Works, Fire Department, City Managers Office, council meetings, all kinds of different entities having part of this and with the community. And also, the design review board has reviewed and approved this design. And that is kind of in the past, but the continuous effort are going to keep going in the future. If we proceed with construction, the team always contacts folks at least 300 feet around radius around the site. Each individual, individual site in this case. And also, I think that one of the reasons why the fire stations and the Public Safety Center have been so successful is because we have definitely gone door to door, knocking on people's doors, talking to them, explaining what's going to happen, trying to communicate clearly and often to let them know what's happening. Construction is construction, and unfortunately, a lot of things that come with it, we can't change. But definitely, we can inform the community. And I can tell you that even personally, we have talked to people that are going to be affected or potentially be affected and try to warn them, try to give them accommodations. We do the best that we can to minimize any disruptions in their daily life. And we become partners with the community. And finally, this is our recommendation tonight. We recommend that the resolution be adopted to a worthy construction contract for Wickman Construction Development and Construction, including the additional alternate for the fire, for the fire, not fire, the fueling station, excuse me. And also, we would like to authorize a professional services agreement with Loving Campus Construction for Construction Administration Services. And hopefully, we can kick off Phase Two in January of 2022. And that concludes my presentation. Do you want to ask any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Fabi. Great, great presentation. Let me see what questions are there. I'll start with the Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Great presentation. The last time, in Phase One, when all the construction was underway, the resources, the engines and the firefighters were redeployed to other places. They were temporary headquarters all over the place. What is the plan for these two stations?
So for Fire Station 54, our staff is going to be distributed in, I don't see too wide, but the staff is going to be distributed and the vehicles as well. That's the plan. And for Fire Station 55 at Point San Pedro, we already have a temporary facility that we are basically repurposing from, it used to be Temporary Fire Station 51 up on the top of City Hall. So we moved that, and we have connected it and all of that. So we're intending to move the staff into that temporary, temporary housing. And that would guarantee to maintain the response time that that, that crew, that that community serves, that, that crew serves.
Oh, so you basically moved the big structure out on Point San Pedro Road. That's what that is. Okay.
That's correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Chief, did you want to add?
Absolutely. Thank you, Fabi. Great presentation. Thanks for all the help as well, trying to get us to this point. It's been a, quite a bit of a lift for everyone, Bill Garen, the City Managers Office, everyone. But what I'd like to add is a special thank you to Chief Gray and Battalion Chief Matt Windrum. They have been working really hard over the years to try to make sure these essential facility projects were something that came to fruition. And I got to say that, you know, even Chief Gray has still maintained an active interest in trying to work with staff and ensuring that we were able to come back to bid at a time that made sense and was fiscally responsible. And they also worked closely with the, the engine and truck company personnel to try to ensure that what we were looking to accomplish could still be accomplished, for the most part, with the available funding. And then as far as the deployment goes, that's correct. The Station 54 crew is going to redeploy probably out of Station 51 and/or 52 so that they're not too far removed from the district that they normally serve and still have a proximal response as well.
Thank you. See if there's additional questions. Councilmember Hill.
Thank you, Mayor Kate, and thank you, Fabiola, for a really great presentation. I actually appreciated the emphasis on a lot of the photos that were included as part of Fire Commission. I actually had an opportunity to tour Station 54. And there were elements you didn't include that I thought, I think were worthy of including just because it is very, I think, for the women and men who live day in, day out. They're spending, you know, many, many, many hours in their shifts. And I think it's important to make sure that quality of life is considered as part of that. So the, that tactile sensation you provided with the pictures of that was very important. And obviously, I'm very happy to see this is coming to fruition, Phase Two. Can you confirm it? $110,000 in the grand scheme doesn't seem like a lot. But is it, is that, does that feel like, or is that, from staff's perspective, the right level of cost for a fueling station? I just want to just, just confirm that that's the case. I assume it is, but I just wanted to hear.
Yeah, Councilmember, I'll jump on that one. We've, we've evaluated that. It's the low bid of all the alternatives. We looked at fueling stations for City Hall, and that's right in the same ballpark that we were looking at at City Hall. At one time, we had set aside $1 million to do a fueling station inside of the Public Safety Center that was underground and had some challenges associated with it. But, but in looking at fueling stations that are above ground and outside, that is a number that's very reasonable.
Thank you. Those are all my questions. Otherwise, I, Vice Mayor Bushy's question was, where's everybody going to go? Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtz.
Thank you for the update. I love these type of projects. It's great that we've been able to have the funds available to, to do this work because these are really important stations and really important parts of our community. For Station 54, are we, is there, is it expanding the footprint or increasing the square footage in that area? Or is it just really modernizing? Is it going to be tear down, total tear down redo?
So it's about the same footprint. Sorry, Bill, do you want to go?
No, I just, I will, just because it's a good question. We, we had intended originally to do the building on the ground level. But turned out that FEMA requires that the residential portion of the building be elevated. So while, you know, square footage wise, it has grown a little bit. Because there's a whole lower level that's kind of mostly storage and the elevator and lobby and a few things like that. The square footage has increased, but the functionality is the same. And the main reason that it has grown is because it has to be elevated.
Okay, okay, great. And for that community in that part of the area, is that still the right size and needed level of service for that area? In terms of?
Maybe two points to that question.
Two points, can you help us with that one? So it's really, is the crew that is there the right size for the need?
As far as we can determine right now, the crew that's responding out of Station 54, it was a question with Station 54, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes. I don't know that there is enough call volume at this moment to support increasing the staff at that location. We could do further analysis and verify that, though, just to, to be sure. But as far as I've been hearing during my tenure, there is no need for additional staff there at this time.
Totally different conversation for sure, but the work that's going on here is fantastic. And I'm excited that it already can get going in January. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. I have just two questions. Again, my colleagues asked excellent ones. I just kept checking them off as they asked them. One is, I didn't recognize the construction company, Wickman. Have we worked with them before? Or could you speak to their credentials on this type of project?
So I did, I did, as part of their qualifications to, after the bid, the project, there's a requirement to submit references and project experience and such. So I had called a number of people, and I received very, very positive feedback from them. Of course, everything else, the legal aspect of them passes. But just from asking questions and... Of course, everything else, the legal aspect of them passes, but, but just from asking questions and, and checking references, they, they definitely, they definitely seem to be competent and, and very well respected. I, I had not personally worked with them before, but actually, it was really interesting. They gave me a, a reference of someone I know. So I called somebody I know. So I know it's, it was, it was an honest opinion from someone else. So we've done our due diligence and, and once you get a lower bid, it's kind of what you can do, but I, I think I'm comfortable with them, yes.
Mayor, can I, can I jump on that? Before the COVID disaster sort of overtook us and we went electronic, we were already moving towards a electronic bid platform and, and it has really paid off on a number of our projects. We use Bid Express. It's a, a bidding tool that, that allows people to bid electronically and it's, it's opened up the bidding climate in San Rafael quite a bit. We, we, as Fabi said, we, we've not worked with Wickham before. They, they came in through the Bid Express, Bid Express platform. And, and the level of competition is such that we think, you know, that, that's been very successful for us. So we're looking forward to working with them. I think I've heard good things, Bobby's heard good things. And so I think, I think we've gotten a good contractor here.
Great. And I assume the due diligence was done, but it's just nice to, to bring that forward so everyone can hear the response that you just gave. My only other question is around recycled water. That's something that we're talking about. So we know that the equipment always looks great. We love that about the fire department. We know that there's a high water usage there. So is that part of the planning or will it be that whatever we can do to maximize every drop of water that's used there? Can you speak to that?
We do, we do have, obviously, we've incorporated all the current requirements for recycling and, and we have bioswales in the, in the landscaping. The fire department has a piece of equipment that actually tests, tests their hoses using and, and recycles the water through those rather than just, you know, using potable water and kind of firing it off. So I think to answer your question, Mayor, of course, we're, we're doing everything we can to, to, to be as sustainable as possible with both of these fire stations.
And recognizing that when the first, when the buildings that were built before, we, we've had droughts, but we, I think we have all, we see it differently now. We realize there's a new normal about the way we look at water. So I just wanted to make sure we were taking an extra look that we are forward thinking in the use of potable and non-potable water when it comes to our buildings. This is the first building we all constructed since we realized that, well, we already knew every drop count, but you know what I mean. So I just wanted to underscore that because that, that is something we want to be able to tell our community that we looked at that and incorporated in the design. Yeah, Fabi.
If I may add, add something. Also, the regulations right now are so strict. We, we can even get meter, water readers from the water department. They, they, in the contractor knows they have to bring basically water trucks during construction, even during construction will be very, very conscientious and will, like you said, every, every drop count. So even during construction, we have accounts for that.
Fantastic. Okay, so sit tight. Let's open this up to public comment. I'll have the city clerk help us orchestrate that. There she is.
Thank you. To comment on Zoom, please use the raised hand feature. And if you're commenting by telephone, please press star nine. Once you've heard the notification that the host is inviting you to speak, you'll need to press star six to unmute yourself. And each speaker will have two minutes to provide public comments. I see no hands raised. That concludes public comment.
We'll close public comment and bring it back to my colleagues. One thing I do want to say, and, and I know the city manager is also listening, I want to make sure that we get this information out to our community. I'm a little surprised there isn't public comment. We're looking at spending nearly ten million dollars. And it really is from Measure E. Thank you to the voters to let us have that. And I know, yes, they do trust us and they trust staff. And we want to continue with the outreach and let folks know what we're doing. This is a big deal that we're excited about. So just wanted to say that before I forgot, but let me turn it to the Vice Mayor for additional comments.
Exactly what I was going to say. Where's the public comment? Where's the marching band? This is awesome stuff. This is a big deal and, and many, many years in the making from approving the funds, all those meetings on the project. And yeah, this is a, this is a big deal. And I will be delighted to vote for both of the, the measures along with consistent with staff's recommendation. I think having additional fuel capabilities out here on the Point San Pedro Peninsula is, is a wise move. And we should invest in, in the future and, and go ahead and include that as part of our motion this evening.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtz.
Fully agree. It's really exciting. It'll be nice to have all of our fire stations up to standards and modernized and right for every type of firefighter that we have. So excited to move this forward.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill.
Yeah, thank you. And I think so much gratitude goes towards leaders who are not currently on council and, and also Chief Gray and other folks that have really given time to this. What many people don't know is that this is one of the things the Essential Facilities Capital Funds, Capital Projects Fund inspired me to, to serve. Just watching what it takes to take a vision and an idea and all of the orchestration to build a case to the community with Measure E. And just to put all of this together, I'm inspired by this among many things about San Rafael. And it is just so wonderful to see this come to fruition and happen before us. I'm so honored to be, when the time comes to vote yes for this. So thank you.
Thank you. And I want to underscore thanking the previous council that worked so hard on both supporting Measure E and all the community conversation around that and bringing forward what's in front of us tonight and, and getting us to this point. And I have to also underscore, I mean, we, the San Rafael Fire Department, we already know is the best in Marin County. And we want to have the facilities that match the excellence of our personnel. Thumbs up. And we want to continue to attract the excellent personnel that, that we can in the future. And to do that, you know, we need to have new and modern facilities. I was reflecting as Fabi was saying, and I have to say she did an excellent job with the presentation. I was on the Critical Facilities Committee. I can't remember when that was, early two thousands. And, and so Mary Beth, when you say this has been a long time coming, you are not kidding. This has been a long time coming. And I am thrilled and honored to be on the virtual dais tonight to be considering this project as it was presented. And I will ask the Vice Mayor for a motion.
I move, I will, I will be making two motions.
Yes, okay.
My first motion is that we adopt the resolution awarding and authorizing the city manager to execute a construction contract to Wickman Development and Construction Incorporated.
Thank you. Is there, do we need the full amounts or is that sufficient, City Clerk?
If we could read the full title, that would be.
I thought, let's just clear this up once and for all. There's something on the agenda that says recommendation. And then they're listed. Is that what we're supposed to read? Or are we supposed to read the bolded stuff, the subject line?
Oh, I see. Are you talking about on the staff report or on the agenda?
Yes, I'm looking at the staff report. Which one of those two things?
I'm looking at the agenda. So the actual resolution language is on, on the.
Agenda.
In the staff report.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, so I shouldn't be looking. Okay, so, so what's on the subject line then? Okay, I move that we adopt a resolution awarding and authorizing the city manager to execute a construction contract to Wickham Development and Construction Inc. For the city of San Rafael Essential Facilities Construction Project, Fire Stations fifty-four and fifty-five in the amount of eight million eight hundred and nine thousand dollars and authorizing construction contingency funds in the amount of eight hundred and eighty thousand nine hundred dollars for a total appropriated amount of nine million six hundred and eighty-nine thousand.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries four zero. And yeah, get out the bands and all the happy sounds because that is, this is a big day. And I will entertain the second resolution.
The second resolution. I move that, that we adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services agreement with Loving Campus Associates Architects Incorporated for construction administration scheduling and additional services for Phase Two Essential Facilities Projects Fire Stations fifty-four and fifty-five in the amount of two hundred and eighty thousand three hundred dollars.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call.
Vice Mayor Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries four zero. All I can think of is yet another reason we're going to be having cake when we're all together. There's so many things to celebrate after a year and a half of Zoom. Thank you especially to Fabi for a great presentation, Director Guerin, and everybody else who's worked behind the scenes. I know, Chief White, your input of your team has been integral to having such a great project. So thank you, thank you. We look forward to updates and eventually seeing that starting to come out of the ground in twenty twenty-two. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Thanks, Tom.
Okay, all right. I love that thumbs up. Okay, so we have another item. SEIU Local ten twenty-one Child Care Successor MOU Memorandum of Understanding. And I see Sylvia here to present that item. I'll turn it to you. Wait, hold on. Unmute yourself so we.
Sorry about that.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor Kate and councilmembers. Sylvia Gonzalez Shelton, H Operations Manager. This item is for discussion and consideration of the SEIU Child Care Successor MOU. Another reason for Kate because we're closing down negotiations. So that's awesome. SEIU Child Care represents thirty-six point four full-time equivalent positions in the childcare division, including childcare directors and instructors. The current MOU will expire on October thirty-first, twenty twenty-one after a two-year term. The city and representatives of the SEIU childcare unit have met over the past few months to negotiate the terms of a successor MOU. A tentative agreement was reached on October first and membership subsequently ratified the tentative agreement. So the major elements in the negotiated successor MOU include agreement for a three-year term from November first, twenty twenty-one through October thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. And the value of a three and a half percent base wage increase for each year of the contract. Overall, the compounded cost for this MOU is approximately four hundred eighty thousand dollars for the three-year term. In addition, there were some economic, non-economic items included as part of the draft MOU which address language clarification and other operational matters. So staff recommends that the city council take public comment and direct staff to return at the next meeting with a resolution seeking approval of the successor MOU for SEIU Child Care. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. Any questions, Vice Mayor? Not seeing any. Councilmember Kurtz? No. Councilmember Hill? No questions? Okay. I don't have any either. I will ask the city clerk, see if there's public comment on this item.
Thank you. To comment on Zoom, please use the raised hand feature. And if commenting by phone, please press star nine. Wait until you've been invited to speak. You can press star six to unmute. I see no hands raised. That concludes public comment.
Okay, I'll close public comment, bring it back to the council for any closing comments. And I, I will start by being so grateful to staff for working with this important labor group. The childcare is incredibly important to the city on so many different levels. It's an incredible community resource. And having this brought before us is timely and we are thrilled with what has been presented. And I'm glad that both sides are happy with it to get us here tonight. So I kind of jumped in. There were comments. I don't know if there are additional comments that we'd like to make. Okay, not seeing any. I would entertain a motion as we talked about reading what was written on the agenda. Vice Mayor, do you want to go ahead?
I was trying to let others have a chance.
I can do it. I can try.
Councilmember Hill. We will get Councilmember Hill.
All right. By move that we accept the report and direct staff to return with a resolution adopting a memorandum of understanding pertaining to compensation and working conditions for SEIU Local ten twenty-one Child Care. November first, twenty twenty-one through October thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries four zero. Thank you so much, Sylvia. Appreciate you and we will see you at a future meeting on this. Okay. We have one more item, the San Rafael Successor Agency. We will now convene as the successor agency. We have one item on our consent agenda. So do any items want to be held from the consent agenda? Okay, not seen any. I will open it to public comment.
Once again, if you're commenting on Zoom, please use the raised hand feature. And if you're calling in, please press star nine. And I see no hands raised. And that concludes public comment.
Thank you. I will close the public comment and bring it back to the board or to the agency for a motion on the consent agenda.
I'll make the motion. Make a motion for acceptance of successor agency quarterly investment report for the quarter ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you.
Second.
Second moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Vice Chair Bushy.
Aye.
Member Hill.
Aye.
Member Kurtz.
Aye.
Chair Kate.
Aye, that motion carries four zero. So we come to the end of our meeting. I would invite staff to turn their cameras back on. As you all know, as was talked about, I am closing tonight's meeting in honor of Ann Bauer, the city's volunteer program assistant who passed away last week. Ann grew up in San Rafael and was instrumental to making the city's volunteer program run smoothly over the last six years. So I first met Ann pretty soon after she joined the city at one of the many, many city neighborhood litter cleanups. I think it was at Albert Park and she helped organize those so beautifully over the years. I remember us all sitting there, gotten out of bed early. It was cold. We were clutching our cups of coffee that she was sure to have there. And at the appointed time, she warmly welcomed all of us, clearly explained our role, made sure we had the gloves. That was a big part, the litter, litter pickup thing. And then she turned us loose. Each of us felt needed and included, and she helped us to feel part of something bigger than ourselves in that moment. So it will come as a surprise to no one that volunteers loved working with Ann and returned again and again. So volunteering is all about showing up. And in this, Ann was an incredible role model. She showed up for the city. She showed up for her community. She showed up for each of us. And we are all better for her having worked for the city. So we hold her in our hearts and may her memory be a blessing to her husband Peter and son Thomas. Ann will be missed by a huge community of friends and family and everyone at the city of San Rafael. This meeting is now adjourned in memory of Ann Bauer.